I'd really like to do everything this week because I just got the doctor's office.
That's good.
Save the money, Dad. Save the money.
Okay.
All right. I love you.
Love you too. Yeah, what the most of them. They have really gone up. Yeah, well, I got, I got a bunch of bills. Bet I should have bought them Saturday. Sure.
All right. I thought I'd make you laugh.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. If I could have your attention, please. We're going to go ahead and get started here. Wanted to do a public service announcement, and that is if you intended to be in the City of Benel meeting, that's upstairs in the third floor. We double booked tonight, but we did have room for Benel. So if you need the City of Benel meeting, that's in the third floor. All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Again, nice to see a good crowd here. Welcome, everybody. This is the Fire County Board of County Commissioners. This is our regular business meeting for July, our only one for July. It's July 14, 2025. It is 5:02 PM, and if I could have everybody stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we take a moment of silence. This is for individual prayer, reflection, or meditation. We take this time to honor and remember our first responders and the men and women in our military who keep us safe and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. All right, thank you. Again, welcome, everybody. Good to see everybody here this evening. Go over a little bit of housekeeping before we get started. We do have one addition to the agenda was not published, so I'll need a motion for this one for approval. But it's the addition for County Attorney Al Hadid. He's requested a brief presentation at the end of our presentation, so it'll be 4D. And just to highlight and his team, his county attorney team, as this is Mr. Hadid's last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we add, we add our current esteemed attorney to the recognitions and proclamations and presentations, 4D, and give him a chance to speak.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Have a motion by...
Mr. Hanson.
Yep, hold on a sec. I was just doing a little writing. Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Carney. This time I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anybody for public comment? Seeing none.
Of course.
Al Hadid has had over 20 years, and every single meeting, he talks about himself and what he's doing. And I really don't think this is fair to do this at the beginning of the meeting. If he wants to make a presentation, there are people here on many other items. Please let him make his presentation at the end of the meeting and not the beginning of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Bring it back to the board. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We'll make that 4D on the agenda. A few more announcements. July 31, we will also have a celebration. This is for the retirement of Mr. Hadid. This is going to be here at the, at these chambers, 4:30 PM for reception and 5:30 for presentation and speakers. Again, that's July 31. County is soliciting applications for the Flagler Executive Airport Master Plan Update Working Group. Applications are now being accepted for individuals. The public, our press release says, "We're seeking a diverse group of stakeholders with expertise in aviation, business development, growth, and planning to provide insight and recommendations throughout the airport master plan update process. The working group will help to align the master plan and its, with its and county's overall strategic plans that support the mission and vision to ensure responsible growth, enhanced operational efficiency, and long-term viability." This, this information is all over social media channels if you need to look further. Our upcoming commission meetings and workshops. The next regular meeting is Monday, August 4 at 9:00 AM, and we'll have a workshop that same day at 1:00 PM. If I could remind our commissioners to leave your mics on, make sure that they're close to you so that we can get everybody's voice on the recordings. And one of the items on consent, actually, I'll bring this one up at the end of the meeting, under board member comments. All right. So with that, our first recognition for the evening, our Flagler County Fire Rescue Life Saving Awards. This is presented by Chief Mike Tucker. It's Chief Tucker or Mr. Sales. Come on up.
Come on, gentlemen.
All right. Good evening.
Well, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Percy Sales. I'm the Deputy Fire Chief. And Chief Tucker's at a fire chief's conference, so he's on the board now, so he has to go do those things and do whatever they do. But with me tonight, I brought Chief Van Dusen. He's our battalion chief that's on duty today, and he's also one of the committee members that gets all these awards ready for us. And then we have one more committee member here tonight, and that's John Raffo. Raffo, can you wait? He's actually the one that does all the write-ups and everything, so these are the behind-the-scenes folks, and we certainly appreciate that. The, what, we're here tonight to present life-saving awards, and we have four different groups. And if, if you're okay, I'll go ahead and get started.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. The first one is for Lieutenant John Stedman and Lieutenant Kyle Lockwood, if they can come down. And while they're coming down, I'll just read the nomination. And one of the things I want to say before I get into this is that the American Heart Association has what they call out-of-hospital chain of survival, and of those components, there's five components to that. That's activation of 911, like someone calling 911 right away. The second part is a high-quality CPR chain in that. The third is early defibrillation. The fourth is ALS advanced resuscitation, and the fifth is post-cardiac arrest care. And you're going to remember those themes because it's going to go through that each one of these nominations. So these two handsome gentlemen here, they were both assigned to Rescue 52. Lieutenant Stedman and Lieutenant Lockwood responded to a 59-year-old male in cardiac arrest. And I actually read this report, and it was, it was quite a call they ran on. And what, what occurred was the call was witnessed, the person was witnessed by the wife unresponsive. She called 911 and started CPR. So that was the first couple chains, early activation, and then you do CPR. And then you get the advanced life care, life support team. So when these two gentlemen arrived, the gentleman's in cardiac arrest, and they did their advanced life support procedures. And they also, they start at CPR, advanced life skills, and they use the automated CPR device. If you recall, you guys authorized us to purchase those Lucas devices probably about, what, about a year now we have them? Yeah, somewhere about a year ago, and we have one on every truck. Every single one of these calls, a Lucas device was used, and the person lived. So, so without further ado, this is the first group here, and so we'd like to thank them for their skills. And I think the patient went in two days later, or came three days later? Three days later, walked out of the hospital.
Wow.
So I congratulate them. We have certificates and stuff that will be given them back at the station, but we certainly appreciate their efforts.
Don't go too far. Don't get too comfortable. We're going to do pictures when we're all done here.
The, the second one is, that's, and not all members here, but most of the team is here. That's Lieutenant Forte, firefighter Holykohl, Lieutenant Olson, firefighter Raffo, and firefighter Keith Froling. I think I got the right Froling because both of the Frolings are awards. Come on down. This group right here was on Rescue 51 and Engine 57, and they were actually on a call. And this call came down, I think they were a couple houses down from this call, and it came down. It was, they were dispatched to a location for chest pain. The crews happened to be, like I said, about five lots away, and it was a 60-year-old female in cardiac arrest. Law enforcement was already on scene performing CPR, and then the crews came in and took over. So if you remember that theme, call 911, early CPR, and then, and early ACLS care. They follow ACLS protocols, and they use, guess what, Lucas device. And that's the automated CPR device, if you don't recall what that is. The family on scene related incidents and provided a necessary information for the crew. And this particular person that was sharing the information recently had a family member pass away. So you can imagine, this is pretty, you know, this person's pretty distraught at this point. They, the patient was sedated during transport. They did all ALS procedures, and at this point, the patient has returned home. So kudos to this crew. I'll say again, Raffo is the guy that does all the paperwork for us. All right. Let's see here. The third one is firefighter Jayvon Jones, firefighter Wesley Libby, Captain Mike Pius, and Lieutenant Froling. So the other Froling. This was another pretty complicated call. And this, this was a call where Rescue 24 and Battalion 40 was on scene. And what I want you to remember about this is, we put Battalion 40, that's the north end battalion, in service October of this past year. So it hasn't been quite a year, and on this particular day, Lieutenant Froling, you were riding up. You were, yeah. So what, what we did was, and again, this is more decisions made by the board. We didn't have supervision on that north end, and you know, we're only going to run two people on a rescue. So this is a pretty significant call. Rescue 24 gets a call, I think it came in as a, did it come in as an unresponsive or cardiac arrest? Okay. So Rescue 40, which is on the north end, gets this, gets this pretty significant call. And with that, the battalion responds. Before, we didn't have a battalion. A battalion would be coming from here. So now that battalion is there, and it just, it just happened to be that Lieutenant Froling was training that day to be signed off as a write-up battalion chief. So that, so this was the group that was there. Handsome Jayvon in the middle there. Don't, don't forget him. All right. So it was Rescue 24 and Battalion 40, and what they found on scene was law enforcement was performing CPR and had already attached the AED. So it was a good team effort. They were all in that chain again, you know. And then the rescue, the crews arrived, they applied the Lucas device and continued the ACLS protocol on this. Captain Pius been there. I think Captain Pius has been with the department over 20 years. He's super experienced, so he knows all the stuff there. And he was able to assist the rescue crews. Care was provided, and this patient returned spontaneous circulation, which means this patient got a pulse back as well. So kudos to this crew as well. The last one for the evening is Rescue Supervisor, again, another, another thing you guys made, but Rescue Supervisor Jared Lanza and firefighter Eduardo Torres. I think they both are here. Yeah. All right. Reason I mentioned Rescue Supervisor is that's a position that we put on the rescue within the last year. So there's a person that's in charge on that truck. So if we have medical emergencies, all those things along that line, now we have some supervision on that truck, and he's one of them. So this was a call Rescue 40, Rescue Supervisor. There's a lot of great stuff about Fire Rescue Supervisor Lanza. But what, what occurred on this is, this is a pediatric call, right? Yeah. And, yeah, 14-year-old pediatric call. And when they first got there, the patient was critically ill, and he eventually declined into cardiac arrest. So what they did was, they applied the Lucas device. I thought you guys were going to jump in on that. Lucas device, yeah. They applied the Lucas device, ALS treatment. Next time, I'll let you do it again. All right. But along with that was the quick action by this crew, and they were able to get this patient back, and she's back in school now. Yeah, so. You know, I just want to point out, I know all day long, we've been talking budget stuff, and I know sometimes it could be like, ah, I'm tired of hearing about that. But these are decisions that you guys made that directly impacted people's lives. There's, there's additional staff on the road, there's additional equipment on the road, and the supervisors on the road, and the training is just invaluable. I mean, we're talking four people, and I think they'd be pretty happy knowing that you guys made those decisions to affect and impact their lives in this way. So kudos to you all.
Thank you. If you can, if you can bring them all back up and get one big group picture. And, and just to let you know, the budget does include quite a few additional staff for you guys, so.
And we certainly appreciate that. You know, one of the things about that is Rescue 25, we stood that up probably a year or so ago, a little bit over a year, with no staff. And the crews have been staffing that rescue on overtime, not mandatory, and keeping that truck in service every day. And it's impressive that they've done that.
Thank you. Bring one.
We'll try it on Pam. Squeeze together.
We just have to divide right here.
These guys are too tall.
They're tall.
Thank you.
Even in the, in the budget, we did, we do have some help coming for you guys, so. And well, thank you, Deputy Chief. Appreciate it. To the firefighters that are here this evening and those that, that couldn't make it, that are out there working. Thank you for your service, your dedication to Flagler County. We appreciate you. And however we can help you, just let Chief know, and, and we'll do our best. So thank you again for being here tonight.
Especially like the families.
All right, next on the recognitions is the 2025 NACO Achievement Awards. That's the National Association of Counties. We have our Communications Manager Karen Callahan presenting this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. I have to follow life-saving awards.
You do. But only communications can, can pull that off.
Yes. Well, the wonderful thing about being in communications is we're actually touting our other fine departments and the awards that they won during the NACO awards. So so each year, NACO honors effective innovative government programs that strengthen services to our residents. And this year, Flagler County stood out in multiple categories. So our first health award. Yes. So our Fire Rescue was awarded a health award for their installed 360-degree camera systems that all nine rescue vehicles. This advanced quad view monitoring system improves driver awareness and enhances patient care by allowing paramedics to review encounters from rear-facing cameras in patient compartments. And Fire Rescue also won a second health award for Taco, the therapy dog. He's our Pembroke Welsh Corgi, and he's owned by community paramedic Rob Errett. He brings calm and comfort during community outreach events and emergency situations, offering emotional support where it's needed most.
Everybody loves Taco.
That's two for Fire Rescue. But we also have one for our IT team. They won for their drone program, their UAS program. It earned a recognition for securing the prestigious FAA certificate of waiver. The waiver allows Flagler County to fly long-range drone missions beyond the visual line of sight, a capability held by only one other governmental agency in the nation. So congrats to them. This one was novel. I'm glad we won this. Our Parks and Rec Award goes to a walk in the park. It's our monthly immersive experience hosted by our Land Management Division. These guided walks educate small groups of people about our local ecosystems and conservation efforts, connecting residents to nature in meaningful and meaningful ways. And finally, our fifth NACO Award goes to Flagler County Emergency Management for their volunteer program. The initiative encourages residents to get involved at every phase of emergency management, from preparation to recovery, helping Flagler County stay resilient in the face of natural and man-made disasters. So those are the five NACO awards, and Ms. Murphy was, attended our NACIO awards yesterday. That's the National Association for County Information Officers, and that consists of more than, tell me if I'm wrong, Julie, 3,000 counties, parishes, and boroughs in the US. And we won three awards in that division as well. So we received two awards of excellence, one for our podcast series, Flagler in Focus. That's our monthly podcast where we examine the stories of Flagler County. And also Julie won an award for a featured article on, again, Taco, the therapy dog. So that was an award of excellence. And then she won one for the article for the FAA beyond, there's a theme here, the FAA beyond a visual line of sight waiver from the IT program. So that one won a meritorious award, and what's pretty awesome about that is the awards of excellence and meritorious, that's basically like winning third and fourth place, and that's across the nation. So out of that category, Julie won two out of four of the possible awards for, for featured articles. So excellent writing skills, and Julie's a wonderful asset. So thank you. So we have certificates for everybody. If we can take a picture with the departments and
Absolutely.
and Julie. Yes. The fire probably already left. Parks and Rec, IT, and, okay, so Jonathan and Matt. I think it's okay. Everybody escaped.
Do you need the fire rescue?
Yeah. Can you, you want to pull somebody from fire?
Yeah, let me go get.
Okay.
Looks like Jennifer's getting somebody. Maybe not.
I figured there was going to be enough fire rescue people when I first came in and around, and and they all left me.
All guys get in the front.
There we go.
There we go.
You owe me a picture.
Look at you. You got two. You got two.
Adopted this 14th of July, 2025 and attested by Tom Bexley, our clerk and our Chair, Andy Dance.
Second.
Thank you. Board, I'd like to make a motion recognizing the week of July 20th as pre-trial probation and parole supervision week.
Now I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pennington and seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Congratulations and welcome this evening.
Thank you. Thank you so much for recognizing us. I just want to acknowledge Ann Sawyer, who's our actual pre-trial services officer who came with us tonight and she's the dedicated servant who actually keeps track of all of the people on pre-trial. So we appreciate her more than she knows. I tell her that all the time, but I think the recognition is good as well. So thank you very much.
All right. Well, very good. Come on up for a picture and we'll hand you our proclamation. Thank you again. Pleasure seeing you. Thank you. All right. Thank you for being here. And our next proclamation is for Purple Heart Day, which is August 7th of 2025. This is requested by Dave Lyden, our Veteran Services Office Coordinator, and reading the proclamation will be our very own special veteran, Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proclamation of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners proclaiming August 7th, 2025 as Purple Heart Day in Flagler County. Whereas the original Purple Heart, known as the badge of military merit, is the oldest American military decoration in the world. And whereas the Purple Heart was established by General George Washington at Newburgh, New York on August 7th, 1782 during the Revolutionary War as an incentive to the Continental Army. And it was the first award made available to the common soldier to recognize outstanding valor of merit. And whereas, following nearly 150 years of disuse, the Purple Heart was reestablished by the United States President Herbert Hoover per War Department General Order Number Three dated February 22nd, 1932. And whereas the Purple Heart has been awarded to approximately 1.7 million military members of the United States Armed Forces who were wounded by an instrument of war in the hands of the enemy and posthumously to the next of kin in the name of those who were killed in action or died from wounds received in action. And whereas the Flagler County has been designated a Purple Heart Community since 2018 and there have been many former residents who have paid the ultimate sacrifice in giving their lives in the cause of freedom. And there are numerous combat wounded veterans residing in Flagler County who as a Purple Heart recipient contribute to their community in countless ways. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners that they hereby proclaim August 7th, 2024 as the Purple Heart Day. This will be 2025 as Purple Heart Day and recognize August 2025 as Purple Heart Month in Flagler County. Adopted this 14th day of July, 2025, attested to by Tom Bexley, Clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller and signed by our Chairman, Andy Dance.
Thank you. Motion for that, Mr. Hanson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve proclaiming August 7th as Purple Heart Day in Flagler County and August 2025 as Purple Heart Month in Flagler County.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Pennington. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, sir, and welcome this evening.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm David Lyden, a Veteran Services Officer and this is Charlie Hanger. You may recognize him. He's our perennial representative for the Purple Heart Award. But I'd also like to introduce Major Dennis Ryan, retired United States Air Force. But before he was an Air Force officer, he was a Marine and was wounded twice in Vietnam in May of 1968. So I'd like to have Mr. Ryan say a few words too, if you don't mind.
Surprise, surprise.
If I'd known this, I wouldn't have showed up. No, I just want to thank you all for the work you do and the recognition you give to all the people out here in the county and for what they do to people and I'm just honored to be here.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you for your service.
What I said last year, ditto. And the other thing I'd like to say, lest we forget, this land was fought and paid for. This is your land. Let us defend it with honor.
Thank you.
God bless.
Thank you. God bless.
Picture or no?
Yes, picture, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you again.
Yeah, absolutely. Nice seeing you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your service, sir. God bless.
And thank you, Mr. Lyden, for operating a tight ship in your office. We appreciate all you do.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll move down to 4C, our presentations for today. We have the Flagler County Audit Report for the year ending September 30th, 2024. This is requested by our clerk, our clerk, County Clerk, Tom Bexley and presented by Amy Miller and Brett Stone from Carr, Riggs and Inman. And good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having us.
Welcome.
My name is Amy Miller and I'm an audit partner for Carr, Riggs and Ingram CPAs and I'm joined with Brett Stone, our senior manager for the audit this year. We are happy to be able to present to you the results of the audit for the county for the year ended September 30th, 2024. I just wanted to take a quick moment before I hand it over to Brett to say thank you for allowing us to serve as your auditors again and thank you to all of the county personnel, the finance teams of the county for getting us everything that we needed. I know it's a long process and we ask for a lot of information, so we really appreciate all those that work so hard to get us to this day to be able to present to you the final results. And I'll turn it over to Brett and let him tell you the details.
Thank you. And thank you for those kind words for the staff. I know they appreciate it.
As Amy said, my name is Brett Stone. I'm a senior manager with Carr, Riggs and Ingram and I'll reiterate what she said thanking the staff of the county and the management team of the clerk office as well for the assistance during the audit process. It is a lot of information and work and it is a long process, so we're very appreciative of the help that they give us to get through that process. We'll start on page 235 of the financial statements, which presents a summary of your fiscal year 2324 audit results, including opinions on the financial statements and major federal programs and state projects, which were all unmodified opinions. Clean opinions were issued for the governmental activities, business-type activities, each of the three major funds and the aggregate remaining funds opinion units. The three major funds were the general fund, the airport fund and the general capital projects funds. Also in this summary, we reported that no material weaknesses, internal controls were noted during our audit. At the bottom of page 235, the summary lists the two major federal programs and three state projects and unmodified opinions were issued for each of the programs tested. Our annual reports required by the rules of the Auditor General start on page 239. In the management letter, we're required to assess the financial condition of the county as of the end of the fiscal year. We determined you did not meet the definition of experiencing a financial emergency or deteriorating financial condition as defined in the Florida statutes. The Government Finance Officers Association, the GFOA, recommends the total amount of unassigned and assigned general fund balances be enough to cover a minimum of two months general operating expenditures in the next year. Based on your 2324 expenditures, those available fund balances provide sufficient coverage to meet the GFW recommendation. We're also required to, by the state, to comment on whether any prior year findings have been corrected and we noted that there were no prior year findings that require correction in the prior year audit report. The report on page 242 relates to our testing of compliance with Florida Statute, Section 218.415 regarding investments. We did not note any material non-compliance in our examination and as such, we reported in our opinion that the county complied in all material respects with the statute. And then our final report is on page 243. This report attests to the county's compliance with certain sections of Florida Statutes, Chapter 365 regarding authorized expenditures and uses of E911 funds. Again, we did not note any material non-compliance and our report states in our opinion that the county complied in all material respects with these statutes. And that concludes our presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Sounds great, so thank you.
Really thrilled.
Thank you to the clerk's office that's here for us this evening. Appreciate it. Again, thank you for what you did for us, for putting that together and glad that staff was able to help you out the way that they did, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I think you ought to tell the public, how long does it take to do an audit?
So for the entire county, we're talking about 2,500 hours.
Wow. 2,500 hours. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. I thought so.
That includes all of the officers as well, so.
Right. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you again. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you so much.
All right. And item 4D, we will bring up our county attorney, Mr. Al Hadid. This is Mr. Hadid's last meeting for the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners and it is our honor to give him a little bit of time this evening to talk about his team and some final words in his last meeting.
I never thought I'd get to this day any many times, many years hence. Well, first, I want to express my gratitude to you and all the commissioners that came before you in giving me the privilege of being your representative in the law. It was, it was very rewarding for me. I learned so much. All the commissioners, all the different boards have thrown huge responsibilities on the county staff, very sizable projects, projects that were game changers for Flagler County. And I have been involved with all of those and I don't intend to recount them. In fact, I'm only going to tell you about things where the people who know about the facts, they're much older and they can't remember, so they can't contradict me. Okay? So what attracted me to Flagler, this was in the late 80s, mid to late 80s, is a very unique place. My wife and I, we bought a place on the beach. It was a getaway. At the time, I was working in Tallahassee in the legislature and we couldn't believe how beautiful it was. And then as we got to know it, we found there was a spirit in the citizens that, I mean, it was, it was so endearing. People loved where they lived and cared about it. They really cared about it. I hadn't seen anything like it. Now, part of that is because it's a small community, right? It's easier to connect with people. And the other thing that attracted me was the county commission. I mean, you know, this was a place, at the time, I think I was here, first here, I think it was under 50,000. You know, what was the popular expression, more cattle than people? And they did very bold things. I watched, and this is in the late 80s, I was not working for Flagler County, just a visitor, a weekender, and they were taking huge tracks on the beach and protecting them for perpetuity, making them public spaces. And they were doing things to protect the beach. I don't know if you know, but during that, and there was some controversy associated with it, but they banned beach driving because they didn't want damage to the dunes or to the wildlife or to the vegetation, or by the way, to the beachgoers. Some of those kinds of things happened in other jurisdictions where there was a lot of driving. So this county banned beach driving. So I took note and I really took note when the county put on the ballot an environmentally sensitive lands bond. And I subscribed to the Flagler Tribune. How else was I going to know what was going on, right? Every Wednesday and Saturday. So I didn't, I mean, I saw that they were going to have this referendum and I thought, wow, that is really great. And it was a tax, a property tax, not a sales tax. So wow. And the front page of the News Tribune in an article written by Carl Laundrie was this picture of the Princess Place Lodge and it was a battle cry of, we have to pass this to save the Princess Place, to save it from development. It was under threat of being developed as a golf course community. And Flagler had attempted to obtain funding to buy it. It's a very expensive, sizable track. And they kept trying to get state funds, but you had to lobby, they didn't have the lobbying clout, so it wasn't happening. But the referendum passed by an overwhelming majority. I believe it was in the mid 60%. And so this really got my attention. Now, it just so happened that in Tallahassee, I was counsel to the Speaker at the time, we were working on a very important bill, not just the Speaker, but the President of the Senate and the Governor, it actually was the Governor's initiative, to create a land buying program, a very major one, for the state of Florida. There was an older one called Carl, you may have heard of it, Conservation and Regional Lands or something like that. So, but this was a much more ambitious one. It was called Preservation 2000. They were going to make a mark and I knew what was happening in Florida, what we all knew that were around in Florida. Florida was overdeveloping and we were losing a sense of our historic fabric. Special places were being overrun with development and so this was like the last gasp to try to save Florida's unique heritage. So it was passed and it was a state and local funded program and I knew that Flagler had not been able to lobby and get the project, so I knew that this was another chance for Flagler. They had a chance now. So I ended my tenure with the Speaker of the House of Representatives.
My wife and I, we bought a place on the beach. It was a getaway. At the time, I was working in Tallahassee in the legislature, and we couldn't believe how beautiful it was. And then as we got to know it, we found there was a spirit in the citizens that, I mean, it was, it was so endearing. People loved where they lived and cared about it. They really cared about it. I hadn't seen anything like it. Now, part of that is because it's a small community, right? It's easier to connect with people. And the other thing that attracted me was the county commission. I mean, you know, this was a place, at the time, I think I was here, first here, I think it was under 50,000. You know, what was the popular expression? More cattle than people. And they did very bold things. I watched, and this is in the late 80s, I was not working for Flagler County, just a visitor, a weekender, and they were taking huge tracks on the beach and protecting them for perpetuity, making them public spaces. And they were doing things to protect the beach. I don't know if you know, but during that, and there was some controversy associated with it, but they banned beach driving because they didn't want damage to the dunes or to the wildlife or to the vegetation, or by the way, to the beachgoers. Some of those kinds of things happened in other jurisdictions where there was a lot of driving. So this county banned beach driving. So I took note, and I really took note when the county put on the ballot an environmentally sensitive lands bond. And I subscribed to the Flagler Tribune. How else was I going to know what was going on, right? Every Wednesday and Saturday. So I didn't, I mean, I saw that they were going to have this referendum, and I thought, wow, that is really great. And it was a tax, a property tax, not a sales tax. So wow. And the front page of the News Tribune, in an article written by Carl Laundrie, was this picture of the Princess Place Lodge, and it was a battle cry of, we have to pass this to save the Princess Place, to save it from development. It was under threat of being developed as a golf course community. And Flagler had attempted to obtain funding to buy it, it's a very expensive, sizable track, and they kept trying to get state funds, but you had to lobby, they didn't have the lobbying clout, so it wasn't happening. But the referendum passed by an overwhelming majority. I believe it was in the mid 60%. And so this really got my attention. Now, it just so happened that in Tallahassee, I was counsel to the speaker at the time, we were working on a very important bill, not just the speaker, but the president of the senate and the governor, it actually was the governor's initiative, to create a land buying program, a very major one, for the state of Florida. There was an older one called Carl, you may have heard of it, conservation and regional lands or something like that. So, but this was a much more ambitious one. It was called Preservation 2000. They were going to make a mark, and I knew what was happening in Florida, what we all knew that were around in Florida. Florida was overdeveloping and we were losing a sense of our historic fabric. Special places were being overrun with development, and so this was like the last gasp to try to save Florida's unique heritage. So it was passed, and it was a state and local funded program, and I knew that Flagler had not been able to lobby and get the project, so I knew that this was another chance for Flagler. They had a chance now. So I ended my tenure with the Speaker of the House of Representatives with the legislature, and I applied to be the county attorney and got selected. Okay, so now comes the issue of, okay, there's this new program, Preservation 2000. And I want to tell you this story because this is very typical of the county commissions I've worked for. They have made bold moves. So here was a program, the cities and counties were really excited about it. There was a tremendous sense of anticipation. They all wanted the money. You know, this was the first time that the state was going to really open up a lot of money, except as you know, the legislature doesn't always do that. They didn't provide that much money, but nevertheless, it was a pot of money. And they had 70 applicants, over 70 applicants, from around the state. And all of us gathered in this big auditorium, a stadium auditorium, and the members, it was called the Florida Communities Trust, they were the voting members. They just spent so much time talking about the projects, different groups would get up there and talk about it. And the one thing that the county commission did that really distinguished us and has triggered a whole arc of events, they decided that even though, because we were so small, under the program, we were not required to provide a match. We were not required. They voted, we are going to give a match because we want to show them that we are really committed. Now, they only had enough money for about seven projects. So they had arranged the six, and of course, they knew about our match, and our public was sending in letters and whatnot. And when it came down to it, one of the members said, you know what? That county, that county that put up its own match, we ought to reward them. And we got picked as the number seven of the projects. And that started a whole chain reaction. Not only were we excited here, but under very, very complicated rules, we were the first Preservation 2000 project that went to closing. So we closed on our property. Now, the board had planned, very ambitious plan to create a coastal greenway. I know you all have heard it. We know of the coastal greenway. And they received an award for that, and if you would queue it up, and I know you see this, it's right behind you. I don't know if you all recognize the importance of it. That was in 1994, and we received the statewide Greenways Award. Now, Sean brought it to my attention because he used it in his presentation against Veranda Bay to the Flagler Beach Commission. He said, well, Alan, that's a, that's a picture of Beatty, isn't it? Absolutely, it is. That's what it is. And we didn't own the Princess Place yet, and a lot of the places on our greenway map we didn't own, but we, but we had our claws in, in that. Now, just to give you a sense of how people collaborate, I was called, can you send us a picture of your greenway? I want a picture of your greenway. So I called Audubon, and there was a gentleman there, he's a photographer, and by the way, landscape architect in his professional life, Alan Ferber, I don't know if any of you knew him, but he just went around and took all kinds of nature photographs, and that was one of his photographs. And I don't know if you know, but that was painted, that was hand painted, that award that was given to us. What did it do? It gave us tremendous recognition. It powered our efforts. I mean, in a blink of an eye, in less than 10 years, we were already at Marineland buying 90 acres from an $8.4 million no-match grant, no-match grant, to buy that land and protect it. National Register, the world's first oceanarium. We tore down the old hotels. We rebuilt the beach. We provided more public access. And people noticed that. That was environmental restoration. So think about what we've done beyond that, with that as a baseline. We, the commission kept pursuing national recognition, a national scenic byway, which today has the highest designation of any scenic byway, All-American Road. That's incredible recognition of Flagler's effort. Also, our lands that we've been acquiring in Pelisseer Creek and in the surrounding areas became part of the National Research Reserve. And that has returned dollars to us, too. Right now, they have about $5 million that they might be able to give us to enhance our land acquisition. So one thing, how one little thing can turn into more and more and more. And what, what have all the commissions before you, and which you are trying to do? You're trying to preserve the character and fabric of Flagler County. It was a pleasure, a true pleasure to work on all those projects with commissioners, with professional staff that we had, with outside consultants, with our citizenry, they were very active, they were very supportive of all these measures. As you know, it takes that kind of support in order to gain the trust of agencies. They have to feel like it's a good investment. That's when they give you the money. So we were on a roll, so to speak. Now, there have been many, many things I've done, I'm not going to recount them all, because some of those people are still alive and could challenge me on the details, so you know. But I wanted to give credit to the staff. The best, the best gift that I can leave Flagler County is a legal department that has gifted, ethical, dedicated, always going to look out for your back lawyers. And that's what I leave you. I can leave with no fear or concern. I know they will always do the right thing with whoever your new county attorney is, whoever. They will find them to be an incredibly useful resource, and I would like to recognize them, and I'd like them to come up, because you're going to probably do a picture or something. I see Sean and Sarah. You all know what Sean has done. You remember on the Ormond Beach case, we totally avoided having to hire outside lawyer or engage in lawyers because it was done through that statute of the requiring a mediation, mediated outcome. And so we were able to avoid that. And Sarah, as you, I think know, I heard from you, you liked her lease that she did. She's doing a lot of our real estate stuff.
It's a beautiful lease.
She did some, well, it's nice to have a beautiful lease. I wouldn't rather have a proper one, right? Which kind would you want? So, so she also, on the Radiance thing, it was amazing, but she was able to get them to do what she's doing now on a transaction, a proposed large transaction. She's gotten, they were only going to give us a special warranty deed, which, as you know, is a lesser form of protection. Well, she talked them into giving us a full warranty deed, so, truest bank, you know? And you know, they're not going to do those things. They want to limit their liabilities, trying to limit their liabilities, but anyway. So they've done great work, and, and I thank, I thank them because I learned a heck of a lot from them, and a heck of a lot from you all, too, by the way. So, thank you.
And you're missing Jen, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, she's, she's at home, not well.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Have to make sure she gets her equal due.
Yeah. Oh, and one, I do want to queue one more thing, and this will, this is, what do they call it, the coup de grâce. Can you put the, okay.
There it is.
Do you see that? That, that also is painted by the state. And when the state reached its 10th anniversary of the Preservation 2000 program, they wanted to present a poster that represented all that was good about that program. So they picked us again, and you'll notice even in the lower left, you'll see it has the first in-ground swimming pool.
Right.
And, and you'll see the magnificence of, of that structure that completed somewhere 1770s, and it has lasted all through this time, hurricanes and everything. So anyway, a symbol of Flagler County's resilience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hadid. You guys can come on up. I, I know I've worked with Sean a long time, Sarah, not so much, but do want to recognize the, the outstanding work that you guys do and will continue to do for us here, so thank you.
Do we have a photo?
Photos Karen?
Oh, no.
It's all right.
There's no photo.
Can we get a photo?
Thank you, Charlie.
Charlie!
Charlie!
Hey, Charlie.
It was a beautiful.
Only they do a countdown, right?
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
One more this way.
Uh-oh, one more.
One more. Did you shake? It's a little shaky.
No, no, they want a landscape.
Come on, Leanne Pennington.
Get in here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Was that you in the boot, Sal, in that last picture? It's like you were George, I don't know which one.
That's, that's next week. Thank you.
That's a great legacy of preservation that we, we inherit and long to live up to those same standards. So thank you, sir, for that story. Anybody else with comments?
No, it's just a pleasure anytime Al speaks because he is truly a historian of Flagler County, and primarily of the, of the whole county, but primarily of the beaches and the historic hammock. He's really chapter and verse, he's a historian of that.
And we expect you.
It's a pleasure to have him talk.
We expect you to sign up and volunteer over at the Holden House Annex Library, right?
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
I had to help her out. Al, you know, I met you close to 20 years ago, and I worked on your planning and zoning board, and I have always found you to be, I'll say, a dad-like image. You're like the father of Flagler County to me. So thank you for all those years of service. I'm going to cry because I adore you, and I know how much of your heart is here. No matter what happens, you are the heart of Flagler County, so thank you for all you've done. I have to say that to you.
Well, luckily, that's the last presentation. It'll be a hard one to follow. Again, congratulations on a, on a significant lifetime, not lifetime, but a really significant portion of your life dedicated to Flagler County, so thank you. All right, we will move on to community outreach. Again, this is, we've got a pretty, pretty good audience. I want to remind everybody, this is a 30-minute time period, so we've got 30 minutes for public comment here. That's allocated for public comment on any consent agenda item or topic that's not on the agenda. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to address the commission. Speakers should approach the podium and identify themselves and direct their comments to the board. So this time, I'll open it up for public comment.
Mr. Chair, am I able to project from up here?
Pardon me?
Am I able to project?
Yes, take us just a second to get it working.
Okay. Thank you, Cayman Orr, Animal Refuge Flagler. My wife Jill and I were on vacation the last week of June, the first week of July, but we were able to watch the Youtubes on the two meetings that were, that took place then. When we returned, I want to thank Ms. Petito. She called me on July 7th to talk about the presentations on the animal welfare piece and sent me the presentations and offered a chance to critique their assumptions and, and some of their figures.
Mr. Orr, if you put your paper right under that lamp post, right there, to the right.
Thank you. In that presentation, we had assumed that there were, if Flagler were to do a shelter, there would, there would be four shelter buildings and one admin animal control building with a total of 96 kennels, a total space of 9,600, at an average cost, if you add all that together, $393 a square foot. Putnam is doing two shelters and one admin building. They have 88 kennels, total space of 7,800 square feet, at a cost of $231 a square foot. Now, their kennels are not air-conditioned, and they do not have outdoor runs. The June 23 presentation referenced using the Humane Society of the United States, their Design Pro package, and it gave the URL for that. I did go through that URL. It's, it's a nice document, it's about 49 pages long, but in that document, it states that the average cost of building a shelter in the last year was $138 a square foot. So I certainly questioned the numbers we came up with for estimating. What are the alternatives? First, we certainly do not need 96 kennels to start. 48 at the most, maybe as low as 32 kennels. There are commercially available, over here, commercially, commercially available prefab kennels available. This unit is a 24 by 60, has 16 kennels. As you can see, it has outdoor runs, it's air-conditioned, has 12 by 20 lobby, has floor drains, and lots of additional options. We recently got a quote for that from this particular company. There's multiple companies that do this. I think I sent you a copy of all this. This shelter with 16 kennels runs just under $175,000. The buyer's responsible for all the land work and permitting and the slab and all that type of stuff, but we need to do that in either case, whether we build or buy a kennel. So, so what are the two options, really? We still could build ourselves, but I'd recommend half the number of kennels we talked about, and reducing the admin building from a 40 by 60 to a 40 by 40. No cattery, no playrooms in the admin building. If you did that, that would take the kennel cost to 810,000 and the admin building cost to 640, for a total of $1.45 million versus the $2.58 that was presented back on 23 June. The other option is consider buying two or three of these commercially available kennels. Three of them, supplying 48 kennels, is a cost of $525,000. No spaces needed for additional admins since they all have lobbies, so you can have one as a lobby, one as storage, one for restrooms and break rooms. The site work is still required.
Going to have to close up the comments.
Thank you.
You can, if you have anything final.
I do. Let's make a bold move, as Mr. Hadid said, and get started with this.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Jane Zilloud. I have three requests, and in a way, they're all going to tie together. I've asked you, Mr. Chairman, several times to please pull 7G from the consent agenda, and the amount of money has been changed. I'd like that done. The reasons, second, secondly, one of the reasons I want that pulled is because I am looking, four years after an agreement was signed, a legal agreement, I am looking at concrete debris across the street from where I live, that if we have a hurricane, could fly and kill people and destroy other homes. Yet, Mr. Hadid has already authorized $74,652 in legal fees to Mr. McKinnon, former county attorney, and Mr. Hadid has never appeared in court, and he's going to retire, and we're still looking at concrete debris. I think this is disgraceful, four years after an agreement. That's another reason I want 7G pulled, because anybody who earns $325,000 a year, 75,000 less than President Trump, who's all over the world and you can never find Mr. Hadid, I think it's disgraceful. He earns $889 a day. That's above my monthly social security check. That is another reason I want you to reconsider your new attorney list. That is another reason I want you to reconsider your new attorney list. None of you are attorneys. I have litigated pro se as a non-attorney. I have gotten figures from Tom Bexley over what has been spent on outside attorneys, $1,200,000. You guys don't do the research that I do. That is why I plead that you let us meet all the attorney applicants and remove the mandatory five-year county experience. We have James Manfree alone, one applicant, who can save the county $535,000 in three years. We need, and who put up this mandatory five years? People who are not attorneys, Heidi Petito didn't even go to college. The public, let us meet all the applicants, and then you make your decision. They represent us. When we have a current attorney, who you're giving accolades, who's farmed out $1,200,000 in 10 years to outside attorneys, who approves your resolutions only according to form, he doesn't even approve the content of your work. So we don't need an attorney right now. We don't, everything that's in court, Mr. Chairman, please, thank you. Everything that we have in court now is being handled by outside attorneys.
Thank you, Ms. Ude.
So we're not in a hurry to get a new attorney. Please let us meet all the applicants before you make your final decision. It's our money, and it's our county. Thank you so much.
Next speaker, please.
I'm Joanne Gordon, this is my husband, Michael. I'm here to speak tonight about this senior tweener, a name I lovingly use about the David I Segal Adult Daycare Center. This center provides services for seniors that cannot live independently at home and are not yet ready for assisted living. The sandwich generation, how are families to deal with this issue? Now the children become the caregivers of their parents. Maybe they are also caring for their own children or grandchildren. Many families still have to work. Few people have enough savings to put loved ones in assisted living that can cost upwards of $5,000 a month. More than a year and a half ago, my husband was diagnosed with dementia. Sorry. And later upgraded to Alzheimer's. We have never encountered anyone with these diseases. I searched the internet to see where I could get help in Palm Coast. I didn't have the right words to find what I was looking for. I called the city, I called the community center, I asked my doctor. No one had any answers where I could go for support. I heard a guest speaker talking to seniors about getting scammed. There was a booklet that passed out, and that's how I found out about the David Segal daycare. We have lived for four years. As I go about town, I see many seniors. A percentage of them will need help the center offers. Not only does it help our loved ones, it gives us the break caregivers need. My doctor said explicitly to me that I need to take care of myself and wellness, the form of breaks from caregiving, or I will experience a downfall of my own mental health. Most things my spouse was capable of and no longer can do falls on me. Example, tasks around the home, running errands, driving him to numerous doctor's appointments. It seems to me, to save the money by closing the center, we need to find more money to support our seniors that need interaction they receive from others at the center. I would encourage you to survey the seniors and the caregivers who access the center and get a sense of the need and benefit of this meaningful service. Let Palm Coast be the leader for this cause to take the worry off many families. This is a much-needed service, the staff is wonderful. Please consider keeping the center. Did you want to speak?
Thank you.
Do you mind if my husband speaks?
Just state your name and come up to the microphone.
Michael James Gordon.
Yes, sir. Absolutely, yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Mike. Mike. And I go to the center, Senior Center, twice a week. In the time I've been there, I've been impressed how the staff takes care of all of us in all situations. The staff is very competent, and they make me and others feel welcome and safe. They love my stories, I make a few friends every day, and I even eat my greens at lunchtime. Please consider not losing, please consider not losing the, or closing the center. I look forward to it going there and get to socialize with others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Stephanie Dwayne, this is my husband, Tom. He also goes to the center. We were very upset that you were thinking of taking it off the budget because he really enjoys going, he goes on the bus, he's friends with Mike, he goes twice a week. They play games.
I do the same. I do what I'm told. And let them translate it, and bring it back one more time, and I can filter on it.
We really, we really need the center. There isn't a place like it here in Palm Coast. Staff is wonderful, they take really good care of him, and he waits for that bus in the morning and, you know. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do want to let the speakers that are talking about the Adult Daycare Center, during our budget workshop, we have the funding for this year. So what we did, though, is we're going to spend time in this next year to look at the financials and just look at how we can make it more efficient. It's a, you know, if you go back and look at the discussion that we had, we just want to make sure that we do our due diligence in analyzing the program and the costs. It is just a very expensive per-person cost that, you know, that the commission is struggling with and making sure that we're doing the best that we can with all the different needs that we have.
Right, we contribute also to the cost, I mean, I know it's probably more, but we do our part.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Hanger, and I'm getting up there in age. And when I heard them speak of the center, I thought of when I took my mother there. And it was very, very nice, very wonderful for her to get away from just sitting with me every day. And I also, I'm gonna be very short because I'm just saying, wow, it's a great place. And I told my husband, when I get up in age, if I get on his nerves, that's the place he can take me. Because I'll recognize it, like sometimes seniors don't remember things, but I'll recognize that place, I'll remember how nice the people were and the nurse in charge. And, and just, it was enjoyable for watching the people, and I sat with them for a while, and I just thought, this is a place I could go if he gets enough of me. And he says, "Why don't you go out and enjoy something else, Jenny?" And let him do something on his own. And I think he'd enjoy the place, too, when he gets up to that point, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anybody? All right. We'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the, to the board. Was there any highlights anybody wanted to make on consent items? Any board comments on consent?
No, sir.
Any? Commissioner Hanson, did you want to pull anything?
No.
Commissioner Pennington?
No.
Just one question, it'll be only the items that are numbered seven, correct?
Pardon me?
It would be only just those, item seven, just for those people who are fresh here in New York.
Item sevens are on the...
And six.
And six.
Correct.
Six is a consent agenda.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pull 7G. I heard you, but I'm not gonna pull 7G. So with that, is there anybody to... Motion for consent?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda today.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, that's mine. It's mine.
Is it yours?
Commissioner Pennington claims it.
That's magic.
Aren't you sweet?
Thank you, ma'am.
It's not?
No.
Not hers, okay.
All right.
Just look at the ID, okay? John Libby.
Is John Libby here?
John Libby. No.
Send it over to the clerk. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Carney. All right, is there any other comments on consent? All right, hearing none, I'll take, call the question on consent. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We will move to general business, and that is item 8A, consideration of an appointment to the value adjustment board. Ms. Petito, who's gonna?
Stand by just a second, it said requested by the clerk for a value adjustment board, but let me just pull it up.
Mr. Moylan?
I'm Deputy County Attorney Sean Moylan, I'm just creating your ballots.
We train them well.
I believe two of the applicants are here.
8A. 8A.
Thank you.
That's not Mr. Libby, okay.
So we have, we have three applicants. We have Ms. Jane Gentile Ude, we have Mr. Richard Gellner, and Mr. Scott Chappia. So if the, there's two applicants here, if they wish to give a brief introduction, feel free to come up to the podium, state your name.
I'm Rich Gellner, and I, I'm a Realtor, and I'm a United States Marine. I think that property taxes are very, very important, and I think that it's critical that we get them right. And with as many people as we have represented, it's great that there's an opportunity, if somebody disagrees or that they think there was maybe a mistake made, that there is a process that they can go through to have somebody else look at it and maybe make a recommendation. And I'd like to be considered for this. I think that some of my strengths that I have is, I'm really good at problem-solving, and I think that's important in today's society. Rather than, you know, arguing, we need to come up with a solution. And also, I'm very good at communication skills as far as working with people. As a Realtor, that's part of my job, but I own my own company and been in charge of companies, led companies with 1,000 people. So you can imagine that in 1,000 people, you have all different, you know, types of folks. And I've, I've learned a lot of lessons in my time. So I'm honored to be considered, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Sorry, sir, what was your name again? I apologize.
Richard and Gellner.
Gellner.
Thank you, Mr. Gellner. Ms. Ude?
Jane Gentile Ude, I've been in real estate, done my license since 1979, and a broker since 1986. Jay Gardner can attest that I took the lead 12 years ago, over 12 years ago, and I have a picture of myself with Charlie Crist because the Florida, it was FAR at the time, Flagler, Florida, FAR, Florida Association of Realtors, it's now just FAR. I lobbied with them to lobby for portability, which means that if you sell your home and if you've lived there many years, you can take your tax savings with you to your new home. Nobody wanted to do anything. John Sebry, who was the head of FAR, and he's now in charge of California, introduced me to Governor Crist at Realtor Day and said if it wasn't for Jane Gentile Ude, we would not have pushed for portability, and Charlie Crist thanked me. It's very important, I love the website that Jay Gardner has done. Value adjustment, to me, is so important because people put a lot of money into their homes, and what you can take with you is the difference between what the property appraiser feels is the true market value minus the assessed value is what you can take with you. And this is why I feel I will be so good on the value adjustment board because I was the forerunner of portability going statewide to begin with. And I've been a homeowner in Florida since May of 1977. I still have my closing statement for my condominium in Hyalea. I can't, I really can't believe this, that I bought for $25,000. And then I had a twin home called, well, we call it a twin home, they're called duplex twin home, in Country Club of Miami, and I bought that in 1984, and that was in unincorporated Miami-Dade County. And I can remember, I was a single mother at the time, and I can remember the day after closing, in my bare feet, running in the backyard and saying, "Jane, you did it, you actually own your soil now." I've been there. Then, when things went really downhill in Dade County, my area was being just destroyed by overdevelopment, and we, my twin home, our twin home, because I met Mark by that time we were married, was on a county canal, and I know about property values. A developer wanted to build, on the other side was nothing but cow pasture. Well, I had 125 feet, and I had this beautiful view, and a developer came along and he wanted to rezone the land. Well, I got pictures of endangered birds. I forget the names of them now, my God, I'm getting old a little bit. And I went to the developer and I said, "You're not gonna get your zoning changed." Well, the developer bought our home. My husband said, "Jane, you cannot win all the wars." He turned out to be a friend of mine. He turned out to be a friend of mine. He let us stay six months after closing, until we found a home that we could love as much as we loved the home that we were selling to him. And the 23 years I've been here in Flagler County, even though I lost two elections, I have my own, I'm Jane Ude Realty LLC. I've never had a complaint filed since I got my license. My, every two, every two years, every three years, we have to take ethics courses, which is great, and I took mine. Every two years, we have to take 14 hours of continuing education credits. I already have 35 credits for September, and I was just missing my ethics course that I took last week. I will be the best value adjustment board member you could ever hope to have, in my opinion. I'm not being humble, I'm talking from 46 years of experience. I also sat on a zoning board. Thank you. I will not let you down. Thank you.
Thank you. And the third candidate had, by email, told us that he's in, can't be here, he's in Norway on his summer vacation. Mr. Chappius. Okay, Mr. Moylan?
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely, go right ahead.
Thank you. So, we have three Realtors, correct? Three, the three applicants...
Three licensed people.
Licensed Realtors. That's not a requirement, is that correct? Okay. Number two, I know why it's vacant. Is this, do they meet often? Are they going to meet often? Are they...
Twice.
Twice, Jay? Three times?
My understanding is, there's been a lot more cases recently, or claims, objections to their assessed value.
The last meeting was exceptionally long, because we had to deal with over 25 applicants.
So people don't like their, what...
They don't agree with their tax bill.
They don't agree with their tax...
Their assessed value.
Can we have Jay come up and...
This last year, Ken, this last year, we had one company put in a massive...
If you can speak on it, Jay.
Oh, do they make money on getting clients?
I don't know.
Mr. Gardner?
Give us an overview of what we're...
Our esteemed property appraiser.
Sorry to drag this out, but... No, it's just about how often do they meet? Is this, you know, how critical is this to fill this? Everybody that applied is a Realtor, and I'm just wondering if...
It's critical, and it is time of the essence kind of thing, because they have to get some stuff done. There's things they have to do. Whether you're a Realtor or not, has nothing to do with it.
Before we send out TIF, or do your complaints come in after the taxes are assessed?
We will send out a trim notice, and then people will decide if we've done something wrong. Typically, they call me, and we work it out. We also will have 50, or 60, or 70 petitions filed by tax reps, never been to Flagler County before, and they just file things and waste everybody's time.
Do they make money on that?
That's what their plan is, yes. But it's something that is...
But we have to accommodate.
Yeah, you need to get someone on this board, and of course, I have no say in that. That's clear, right?
I know.
And there's going, you had two fingers up, so there's two meetings, right?
Yeah, they meet probably twice, maybe three times.
And it's coming up in August.
Yeah, they have to have a meeting to settle everything, you know, the attorney, the magistrates, they have to pick magistrates, that kind of stuff. And then we, of course, do our hearings, and the magistrates then rule and send stuff back to the board, which they have the option of accepting, or remanding, or doing whatever, you know, that's a choice they make.
So it's in a process situation?
Yeah.
So it needs to be done urgently due to the timeframe?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Gardner? One of the gentlemen is in vacation, and I don't know the timelines of when they'll be back, but does that disqualify him if he's not here immediately? Or can he be...
I don't think it has anything, I'm surprised.
As long as you said you needed somebody quickly, so I just want to make sure that there's time for them to come.
I didn't say I needed anything. I said the board needs, because they have meetings that got scheduled. I'm sure the value adjustment board folks will be able to answer that question, but if you were to put this off, it would be bad, because the board can't meet, and we have dates that we set, when we send that trim notice out, they've got time to file petition, the hearings have to be heard, or they have to be given certain amounts of time and that kind of thing. So, yeah, y'all need to pick somebody.
Thank you, sir. Dana has something to say as well.
Our organizational meeting is August 7th, so that's the first meeting for the value adjustment board.
Okay, thank you.
It is four to one, Mr. Richard Gellner.
Mr. Gellner?
Congratulations, Richard.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your opportunity to serve, sir.
This is item 8B, consideration of the sale of .09 acre parcel located near 66 and 68 Hernandez Avenue.
Who's presenting? Yes, Mr. Chair. If you had time to take a look at that staff report, this is a narrow strip of property off of Hernandez Avenue in the Hammock, and it came into the possession of the county through a sheetment, that is, the person, the owner did not pay the property taxes. So this was not something that the county sought out. Normally, when the, when the county wants to dispose of real property, you, you put it out to a competitive bid, unless you're conveying it to a government entity or a nonprofit. But there is an exception in the statute for this type of situation, where you have a very small piece of land that is of no use to the county. There's nothing that can be built on that, because the zoning, it's just not big enough. There is actually an encroachment on the property, and there's also an access easement on the property. So the resolution before you makes the required findings under the statute that the property is too small to be of any use to the county, and may be of use to neighboring owners. There are three adjacent or contiguous property owners. If you approve this resolution, we will send out notice to them via certified mail. At least one of the owners is represented by Mr. Bear, and he let me know that the neighbors are having discussions to try to work out some type of an arrangement. I don't know the specifics. He left the country last week for a trip, one of his annual trips to Africa for some charity. So I don't know any of the details of that, but all three of the neighboring landowners would get notice via certified mail, and then they have an opportunity to submit a proposal to us.
Questions for Mr. Moylan?
I've spoken with one of the landowners, and I went out and looked at it. It's really small. It's really tiny. And the easement on it is actually a driveway for one of the houses. So, yeah, it, it really makes sense for the three homeowners to get together on this. It's, like I said, it's tiny, and there's already an encroachment on it. Already. So, but, but, but when, when the encroachment was made, it belonged to somebody. It belonged to one of those houses. I think it was the southern house. But, but then when it, it's sheeded to us, it was already stuff built on it, on this, on this 15-foot wide. But the easement for the driveway is in perpetuity. That doesn't go away, because, because it's a flag lot, you know, it's a long driveway.
What I, what I saw from, from the aerials, I checked a couple aerials, it appeared that there was three different projects, parcels, one parcel, but had three different, I'll say, encroachments in that small strip of land.
There are a lot of little buildings.
It was like a useless piece of land for access to the, you know, maybe an intercoastal access. But it does, it is intercoastal land at the end of it, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And I, I don't know when those occurred, if there was, I'd be curious to know.
Long, decades and decades ago, we did look at the title work, and not surprisingly, it's a bit of a mess.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of, that it's, it's congruent and just not, not in array where we would like it to be. So if we're deeding the land over to them by selling it to them, we need to make sure that our title work, in my opinion, is clear and concise with them doing what right, what needs to be done, as far as it getting recorded, as far as what's on those properties, not just haphazardly being done. Because when they go to sell those properties, we may be in jeopardy of being irresponsible to not do it, or, you know, concerns that they'll put it on our property, that it's our property originally. So sometimes people do things, they put up sheds, fences, without permits, and so I think it has to go through a process, not that it's an emergency.
We will provide a county deed, it's a statutory deed, where we don't warrant the title.
Okay.
And I said the title is, there are some discrepancies in it. The land was handed back and forth between these neighboring, not the current owners, but previous owners of these lands.
But the chain of title will, should be showing that, and if it doesn't, then I don't know that it's a healthy deed, put it that way. And I think as, us giving this, we're working in the middle of this, so I think we need to clarify our position on that, just to make sure that it's not come back to haunt us later, that's all. Could be generations from now, from what you're saying, but we still would like to get that corrected, if it's at all possible. That's my biggest concern. And of course, the value of the properties, probably, you know, if we talk about the assessed value, I saw that was on the information as well. Assessed value sounds great, but as a rule of thumb, from most counties in the state of Florida, a lot of appraisers, when they appraise a property, it's not the assessed value. The value actually turns to be something like 1.25% of that assessed value. An assessed value is a reduced value, because if you look on anybody's tax, tax information, their trim notice, whatever, they're gonna see that, you know, it's not the same as what's, it's assessed for. It's assessed for more. That's what the tax assessment goes on, usually. So, it's just to be wary of it, make sure that we have the right people to, they're gonna agree to everything, but as far as our end of it, and what we get out of it, we should make sure that it's accurate, if any way. Thank you.
Well, tax roll, right? It goes back on the tax roll?
It'll be divided in the tax roll to three different people.
Depending on the arrangement.
No, if they agree to that, right? Isn't there three people involved in it?
Yeah, but, but, the ideal solution would be one buyer, would be the, and that's what they're working on. 60 doesn't have any encroachments from their lot, but it's between the two lots.
66 and 70, it was?
66 and 68. That's where, that's where the encroachments are. But, but again, the, the part of it that goes by 60, 60 Hernandez is a driveway.
Yeah.
That goes to, and I forget if it's 68 or 66, it goes to one of those two.
What's that?
So...
Right, yeah, it's gonna depend on who buys it and how it's gonna look, but we want to just make sure our, our Ts are crossed and our dots, our Is are dotted on that, because it will come back.
Do we see this again, Sean?
Uh, no, this would be it. Unless you want to, we can always, you know, bring back to you whatever the proposals are for a final approval, if you, if you would like.
Just sell it.
Just sell it?
I think we should just sell it, just be done with it. It's just tiny, I mean, it's so small.
At what price? Is there a price on it? I'm just saying, did you make a price to it?
They will, they will bid. It sounds like they're gonna have some sort of joint proposal.
Okay.
Or they could just submit sealed bids, and the highest bidder would win.
Okay, just curious.
Again, the easement won't go anywhere, as Commissioner Hanson said.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item 8B, consideration of the sale of .09 acre parcel located near 66, 68 Hernandez Avenue.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Carney. This time, we'll go out to public comments. Anybody from the public wishes to comment on this item? All right, seeing no one, we'll close public comment and bring it back. Any final questions?
I have a final question. You said they, they could bid, it's private, like, they don't know what they're bidding against each other, and there won't be a minimum?
No, you could set a minimum if you want. Our goal is to get rid of this.
I understand, but I mean...
It is sheeded to us...
They all collude for a dollar.
They, they very well could. They could.
We've had that happen.
Go bid on it.
Anybody would be able to, if it's, if it's available. It's restricted to the three adjoining properties, so it's only open to those three.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Essentially, we're giving it to them, to one of the three. That's what it is. We're giving it to one of the three.
Selling it to one of those three, right?
For a dollar. Or somewhere in there. You have to assume it could be low, or you can set a minimum, just, I think we need to...
Be reasonable about it.
All right, anything else?
Yeah. I mean, I would just hate to set a press, I mean, that, this has happened before, that where we sold property like this.
Yes, I do recall once in Flagler Beach, we had, there was a little tiny triangle parcel, I don't remember how we ended up with it. In that particular case, it was truly sealed bids, and I don't remember the dollar amount.
Not sealed.
And we did end up with the town center parcel, same way, but that was an open bid.
That was an open bid, correct, yeah.
I, I just, I don't, I don't know, I think you, there should be some, some measure of minimum, in case this is an ongoing thing.
Are you thinking 10,000?
Or sliver here, sliver there.
What are you thinking? Throw out a number.
I, I don't know what number, I would hate to, I mean, there should be a real definite number to put on that, I just don't think I'm the right person to put the number on it. Is there...
The, the property appraiser has its just value at 20, just over 25,000.
I just throw out 10, so...
I thought it was 125,000.
No.
No, no. That seems real high.
Seems really high.
Yeah.
But for that level, sliver.
Intercoastal access. Intercoastal access. Think about that.
Opposed to giving more direction?
I just have to give it. I know, I just don't want to be the one giving the number. It just seems strange to me that, that, that that would be, that there's not a standard there for how we handle these, as far as a minimum bids, like a minimum number, and I don't know what the, you know...
Well, if the property appraiser says 25 appraised, no, assessed.
I think there should be a procedural for this, for future, just FYI, not necessarily this one, but...
Not to drag it out, but have we ever had a procedure towards this? None at all.
Just a statutory procedure.
Just a statutory procedure.
Sealed bids.
Right.
It's not something we want.
Do we call the sealed bid? Do we call it? Like, do we advertise it? We're the ones that advertise it.
No, we send them certified mail, and then they have, I believe it's 10 days under the statute to, to submit a bid.
Okay. Then in the letter, in the correspondence, we could say, minimum bid?
Sure.
Okay. I'm gonna go with Leanne. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I would like to give some direction to have a minimum on this.
Can we, if they, if they get three bids, and can we throw them all out and say, try again?
We could. Yes, we don't have to...
Yeah, but we could, we could set it up right the first time, and just have a minimum, so that we don't have to throw them out.
Just seems, it just seems like, but I don't know what the right number would be for something like that, so I, I don't feel comfortable being the person that gives a number.
Well, something is only worth what somebody is willing to pay for it. So, if you, if you don't, if we don't hit the number, and they, no one bids, then we can start over. Other than a dollar, you made a good point, Leanne, it's a, you could get a dollar. There's nothing saying we...
I just don't want to see this happen time and time again, when people find pieces of property in a situation near them, but, you know, I'd rather have a procedural for it going forward.
Did I do public work, public comment yet?
No, you did it.
We have a motion. We have a motion, I guess.
I have a motion and a second for following statute, so this time we'll open the floor up for public comment.
Hi, Ron Long, Aldo Drive. I mean, honestly, guys, this property's not going to be worth anything to anybody else. If anybody else tries to come in and buy it, what are they going to put a house on it? Are they going to do anything with it? Put 100 bucks on it and let it go. I mean, really, it's not, and it's not like you're going to lose revenue and stuff, yeah, just put 5 bucks on it and let it go.
I'll park my boat on there. Then what?
Well, is it allowed to be used as a parking, is it zoned for a parking spot?
Raymond Royer, Flagler Beach. If anything, at least cover the administration cost, I'm sure there's got an administration cost in this, so at least cover your, your cost. Because that's the only thing I could see that you should be looking at, and so I'm sure you got at least a thousand dollars in administration cost in this, so thank you.
Mike Janus, an interested party. How many square feet do you think that lot is? It's 45,000, and you moved the decimal point, 2-0s to the left, how many square feet is that? 450 square feet. Now I ask you, what's the best way to handle the interest of all parties? Pay them all the same thing?
All right, anybody else for public comment? All right, seeing them, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second, motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Carney, to follow Florida statute. Is anybody good with that? Do you want to go with a vote on that? I'm ready. All right, so we'll call the question, and this is just based on following Florida statute. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
We have one nay. So the motion is four to one approving. All right, we'll go to item nine, this is a public hearing, this is legislative transmittal of the update of the 2010-2035 Flagler County Comprehensive Plan and first reading of an ordinance titled similar to an ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners of Flagler County, Florida adopting the update to the 2010-2035 Comprehensive Plan to be known as the 2025-2050 Comprehensive Plan. And welcome, thank you for your patience and waiting, but welcome.
Glad to be back. Good evening, Commissioners, Simone Kenny, Planner. We are here to gain consensus from the Board to transmit our draft comprehensive plan to the state. It's been a long process to get here, but we're in the home stretch, and so today we have one final wrap-up presentation that's going to be presented from our wonderful consultants, Inspire Placemaking, who have been on this nearly two-year journey with us. So we have Chris Doherty and Gabriela Castro.
Again, good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, good to see you all again. Again, Chris Doherty, Planner with Inspire Placemaking. You didn't scare us off, I know you thought you did, but you didn't, we're back, and we're going to finish this, this is awesome. Congratulations, I know it's been a long time, you've done a lot of hard work, I know, you know, you've been working on the drafts through the different workshops, so thank you for that, that's important, because, you know, this is your work, not just ours, and we, and when we do these things, when we do comp plans, we do it for the communities, we don't do that for the name on our company logo, or for myself. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and, we have a short presentation, but for the transmittal hearing, this is a required hearing to transmit the draft to the state agencies for review, we just wanted to make sure that, for the benefit of the community, to get to see all the hard work here. So with that, we're going to go ahead and just recap the community input through the public engagement process. We'll talk about the element updates, and not just the full update to the comp plan, we're going to go through kind of the highlights of each element, we're going to talk about some of the recent changes that you haven't seen just yet, some that you've already talked about internally, and then talk about what the next steps look like. So just by the numbers, this is what the community engagement looked like, we had almost 2,000 visits to the project website, we had a little bit of a lull, but then we got a really great bump in our surveys taken, so 1,100, just a little bit over 1,100 surveys, we had 10 meetings, we had seven targeted input activities, so 17, pardon me, where we asked folks to, you know, participate in different topic areas, whether it be transportation, whether it be housing, whether it be rural character and preservation of the rural area. These are the vision directives that came out of that community input, I'm not going to read these again, I know we've talked about these several times, but increasing resiliency, or cultivating a more affordable and diverse housing market, preserving the charm and the character of the rural communities, ensuring a sufficient clean water supply. We wanted to bring it back just a little bit, and identify how this aligns with the strategic plan. You have four pillars, three of which, effective government, economic vitality, and growth in infrastructure, those three really do align with the comprehensive plan, and you'll notice that there's some common themes that overlap with the vision, and again, the vision is what we use to update the comprehensive plan, in addition to the data and analysis. So maintaining a financial and stable government, build and maintain relationships with the municipalities here in Flagler County, diversify and enhance the local economy, promote tourism, provide for more affordable workforce and a table housing options, and then provide infrastructure, protect and manage natural resources, preserve and enhance cultural and recreational leisure activities. So again, those are some of the things that were, you know, strategic priorities for the Board, and we just wanted to make sure we highlighted those as the strategic plan was one of those documents that we utilized to help us understand the needs of the community. I'm going to take you through just the general update, kind of what you're looking at in each element, Gabby's going to go through the highlights of each element. So broadly speaking, of course, we updated all the data and analysis, all the goals, objectives, and policies, so this is a full refresh of the comprehensive plan, this is not just a quick look and a quick year update, this was the full kit and caboodle. We, of course, updated the planning horizon, moved that from 2035 to 2050, adjusted all of the different State Department names that have changed, you know, it seems like every other legislative session, we have a new department, or the department name changes, so we want to make sure we get that right. Of course, we have to address statute changes, so we also did that as part of the update. We updated some level of service standards, particularly with transportation, and then, as I mentioned before, incorporating those vision directives and the strategic plan. And so with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Gabby, and she's going to take you through each one of the elements, really just touching on the highlights.
So we staff met with you guys on June 2nd, and since then, these are the most recent changes that have been done, so in the conservation and coastal management element, we amended those policies to use the proper language to describe A1A. For the transportation policy, we changed it to say biannual traffic count instead of biannual. For future land use, we amended that policy to include parking to the list of policies that the land development regulations will have, be maintained. And then for, we added a policy to amend relocation strategies for redevelopment, and then for the intergovernmental coordination, we amended the hurricane evacuation plan to just be referred to the evacuation plan as, because there's additional events that occur, that we, that the emergency management uses as that plan for. So next are all the elements with the highlights of each one, so briefly go over them, because you've seen them multiple times, and we don't want to make this presentation too long. So we are increasing the non-residential intensity for commercially low, for commercial low, commercial high, and industrial. We are providing policies that address creating mixed-use communities and housing variety. We are, in the future land use element, we are adding objectives and policies to preserve agricultural operations and rural characters, and we established some guidelines and policies for land use amendments when they're coming, to preserve that agricultural and timber area. And we've removed the farm policies because no one used them, they weren't servicing, so we amended those, incorporated those into the, into the existing policies, but we removed that program out of the future land use element. For transportation, we created, we added a policy for the biannual, every other year, to collect traffic counts, provide, so the county knows, you know, what, what the traffic looks like in its roads. We provided policies to expand public transportation and trail, and trail priorities, and we implemented a complete street design principles in those, in the policies. Additionally, in transportation, we establish policies to create an airport overlay, and to work with the city of Palm Coast to develop an economic strategy for that airport. In housing, we removed the language it originally had to only allow, or only require ADUs, accessory dwelling units, where there was income qualifications, we've removed that language, so it's accessible to anybody, those policies will then be implemented in the land development code. We established a policy about making sure that there's affordable housing options throughout the county, not, you know, located in one area, and we developed, we developed priorities for, to create housing strategies for seniors to prevent homelessness. Infrastructure, we streamlined a bunch of the policies, existing policies, and, you know, have policies to coordinate with utility providers and ensure compliance with the Basin Management Action Plan. In coastal management, we require, we created a policy to preserve a minimum of 10% native vegetation in the coastal area, and require that beachfront developments dedicate an easement to the county for beach re-nourishment. We wanted to preserve beach accessways, so we continually require development to continue the beach accessway, relocate it on the site, or dedicate it, donate it to Flagler County. We made sure that the policies are consistent with the vulnerability assessment and the compound flooding, and we prohibited, if there's a hotel or motel in the coastal high-hazard area that increases evacuation, they have to address those, they have to mitigate for that impact. In conservation, we developed a program for farmland conservation to coordinate with the USDA and the Rural Lands Protection Program, and we established a priorities map for farmland conservation. We established a policy to create a connected greenways plan, and we establish a policy for, to evaluate whether the hammock area should be identified as a special ecological district. We also created a policy to evaluate creating a regional wetland mitigation bank, as noted earlier, Flagler has done, some stuff, has done a lot to preserve and conserve its nature. And we required, as we'd addressed earlier, to require the parcels between A1A and the Atlantic Ocean to be zoned at the lowest density or intensity that their respective future land use categories allow. For economic development, we established policies to create a quarterly report to summarize the health of the businesses and industries within the county, policy, policies to promote tourism, and attainable housing opportunities, and support organizations and agencies that stage, stage destination-defining events. Recreation and open space, we established policies to prioritize facility needs, including amenities and upgrades that make the beach areas more accessible or more user-friendly, and assess the feasibility of a regional sports complex, and ensure that development along A1A minimizes its visual impact from the road, and provide beach access every half-mile and public parking to maintain public access. For intergovernmental coordination, we established a priority to create a joint planning committee with the municipalities and the county through either a joint planning agreement and inter-local service boundary agreement, or some other form of coordination to be able to prepare for coastal resources, and to better address annexation and roadway maintenance, et cetera. Capital improvements, we consolidated all the levels of service throughout the comprehensive plan and moved them to capital improvements. In addition, we amended some of the level of service, so we increased the wastewater level of service from 240 to 264, and then we revised the level of service for arterials from, urbanized from C to D, and from rural arterial from B to C. And then, so next steps, if you guys choose to transmit this to the state, it'll be a 30-day review, and then hopefully no comments, we would be back here, an adoption meeting would be held, and then it goes back to the state to say that you're in compliance. And then, LDC updates, it takes, the state requires you to update your LDC 12 months after this adoption to incorporate all these changes, so. That's all we have, we have, we're here to answer any questions, Adam, Simone, Chris, myself.
Great, questions?
I'm just curious how, and I'm sorry to open the can of worms, but as we adopt this, and then move to the LDCs, Sean knows where I'm going, what does Senate Bill 180 do to all of this?
I can jump in and say that our game plan at the moment, as we still research what all other 67 counties and 400 municipalities are also doing to address this, our plan is to transmit to the state first, see if the state comes up with any comments related to Senate Bill 180 on their own. What we're most likely expecting to hear from them is to refer to our own legal counsel in that case, kind of reading through and selecting those potentially more burdensome policies, and deciding to pick those out and not adopt them, and then I know our legal department has already begun that, that review.
Yes, if I could just follow up there, we've already begun that process, we have to remove anything that could be considered more burdensome, like perhaps that level of service on wastewater. So we've, we've started the process, we will excise out those provisions that are more burdensome, and just keep them, keep them on file until that bill is fixed or expires, and then we can perhaps through an year amendment, put them back into the comp plan.
Okay. Are we going to proceed with the LDC? Is that a requirement?
We really should.
Okay.
Yeah.
But how, I mean, how do you do that?
It's going to take a long time to do, so we may as well get started, and until that bill is changed, or until the time period expires, we won't be able to adopt more burdensome land development regulations.
We could draft, have a draft of a new LDC that we just table until the timeline expires?
Correct.
Okay. All right. All right, I think that, I don't have any other questions. All good?
Great, I just want to thank you all for the time.
I just want to thank you all for the time. I know it's, it's a long time coming. And Simone, I want to recognize you for a lot of efforts you've put in and all the meetings you've gone to. And I've seen, watched you start from very quiet to being very capable. And it's just wonderful to see this compiled. It's beautiful, and I'm hoping that it's easy from here on in to get this where we need to go. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Chairman, I move that we approve the transmittal of this update to the 2010-2035 Flagler County Comprehensive Plan to the state.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Carney. This time I'll open it for public comment if there's anybody in the public that wishes to address the commission on the comp plan. Of course there is. Come on up.
Come on up, Jody.
They turned that.
It was on earlier. They'll, they'll turn it right on.
Before I start, I had something to pass.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
My name's Jody Ballinger. I live in the Hammock. I spoke before about a policy, CME 183. It's the one that has to do with the parcels that lie between the ocean and stretch the whole, and stretch from A-1A the whole way to the ocean. And the policy says that they shall be zoned for the lowest intensity or density allowed for their respective future land use categories. If you look at the objective, you'll see terms like designated scenic routes, protect scenic road system, preserve the coastal area's natural beauty. The scenic highway runs from north of Beverly Beach to Marineland. And so it seems that in order to implement that objective, that all parcels that lie adjacent to A-1A in unincorporated Flagler County shall be zoned for the lowest intensity or density allowed for their respective future land use categories, all the parcels along A-1A. So a July 8 article in the Palm Coast Observer referenced the sewer coming to the Hammock. It said that there are 211 vacant lots along A-1A that are zoned RC, residential, commercial. I provided you with a sampling of those lots, along with parcels that have more intense zoning and future land uses. Mr. Mingle was interviewed for the article and pointed out that owners of those parcels, which are zoned RC, would first have to apply for and be issued a special exception from the planning board. He also said that the applicant must demonstrate that the proposed use is appropriate to the area. However, under the proposed comp plan policy, 183, many of the RC parcels could apply for rezoning to C2 and a future land use designation of commercial high intensity because the parcels do not stretch from A-1A the whole way to the ocean. If the rezoning were approved, no special exception would be needed. In 2023, Star Car Wash LLC, which lies west of A-1A, applied for rezoning from RC to C2 and for change of the future land use from mixed-use low intensity to commercial high intensity. The application eventually ended up in front of the Board of County Commissioners. After much debate, the board denied the request because the owner would not reveal what he wanted to build on the property. In my opinion, CME 183, and it's one that goes with it, which is Conservation 1144, should be rewritten to include all properties that lie adjacent to the A-1A scenic highway. Star car wash scenario would be eliminated. The parcel zoned RC would remain RC. The special exception process would remain in place. Commercial high intensity and residential density would not be increased, thus providing some protection and preservation for the A-1A scenic highway.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. We do have a motion, Commissioner Hanson. Who was the second? Kim. Commissioner Carney. Okay. Any other questions following up on that comment? Is there any other?
Yeah, I'd like to modify my motion. I would move that we approve the transmittal and make that one change in 183 to have it east and west of the scenic, scenic byway.
You'd have to remove, do you want to remove your second?
For discussion, sure.
Okay. So go ahead and restate your motion, Commissioner Hanson.
I thought I just did.
For me, for the benefit, did you get it? You're good?
Sure.
Okay, so you're gonna, what's the language that you're adding to include the west side?
It says east, so I have said east and west.
Okay. All right. So with that, is there a second for that?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. The second by Commissioner Pennington. All right, so let's discuss.
Well, I think I'm going to defer to legal for a moment about what that.
I was going to ask for clarification. Is the intent that we apply that provision to any parcel contiguous to A-1A?
Yes.
Okay.
The A-1A or just?
Well, in our jurisdiction.
Just in the Hammock.
Scenic.
The scenic. Scenic A-1A.
The contiguous is just along A-1A, would not include.
Because the way, the reason I asked is because the way it's written now, it's talking about parcels that touch both A-1A and the ocean. So think of Painter's Hill. But with the new motion, or with the new provision that you're seeking, it would be both sides of A-1A regardless of whether it goes all the way to the ocean or not and in the area north of Beverly Beach and south of Marineland.
Well, the goal would be to prevent somebody from going to high-density full commercial in the scenic, along the scenic byway. That would be the goal.
No commercial?
No. It would remain what it is now and then?
But it is RC now.
RC. RC. But it can't go to?
High intensity.
High, C2.
C2, C3.
C2 or, all right, commercial high inten, all right.
This is a discussion that we could have between now and, and the second reading, right? I would just, I don't know that, that it's necessary to modify the language that's here without, and we've, we've gone through extensive review of all the different languages and changes that we've done. And I, we have time to bring this back and have staff do an analysis of the implications of it, other than just sitting here at the dais. So I'm not, I'm not in favor of just a whim change to the comp plan here at transmittal time when, when we have time between now and the second reading, one, to get the comments back, and then have time to review this with staff.
Can this be changed in the second reading?
Yes. We have ample time to edit the comp plan in between our transmittal and our adoption. I would like to make the point again that the original intent of that policy was the parcels that directly butt A-1A and the ocean and that in, amidst this discussion with Senate Bill 180, expanding that area to any parcels contiguous to A-1A would most likely be considered more burdensome as well. So for that reason, it does make sense to, to read, address the specific topic in between our transmittal and adoption.
Again, I'm not opposed to any more strict and stringent applications. It's just the, the timing of this without, because then we can actually bring in the analysis of sewer to the Hammock, which we really haven't done yet, is looking at each of the parcels and the application of sewer and how it applies to increasing developable area because there's no septic systems or drain fields anymore.
Right. And what sewer, with sewer coming into the Hammock, what happens is, is they don't have to do a, a septic field anymore.
Right, right.
So.
And that was part of the LDCs, but I mean, we can, we can look at it. I, I'm not opposed to what was stated. I just would rather transmit this and then spend time and have staff put together a real review of it.
Because there was potentially C2 property already there, right? And they may be negatively impacted.
No, there, well, there is some C2.
I see there's some C2 here. And you could end up, end up having, they'd be staying in the... Okay, so the direction can be, oh, I mean, we can vote on this one way or the other, but that your direction would be to move this to a discussion before, to have before the second reading so that we could see what kind of impacts it would have negatively or on county-wide or?
I appreciate the input that's been submitted. The, the more detailed person in me wants to have time to be able to look at this and have staff actually prepare some, you know, some documentation and review it instead of here at the, at the first reading of the ordinance. And, and again, not that I don't object with some of this analysis, and again, appreciate, and it can work either way. I mean, if you are dead set on making this change now, it can be changed again back. But, so it works both ways.
Well, if we send it, if we send it, transmit it as is, without making any changes, I'd be okay with that if we know we can, if the staff analyzes this and says there's a way to word this to where it makes sense and protects the A-1A corridor, scenic corridor, then I would, I would, I would agree with that.
I'd like to submit it with the, with the wording now and let the state give us the opportunity to tell us whether or not it's burdensome. And then in the interim, work the deal and then at the second reading determine, or before then, whether or not we want to leave it. But I'd rather give it an opportunity to sit at the state and let us know if it's burdensome or not, along with the rest of it.
I agree. And so I'm, let me modify my motion again, just transmit it as is to the state.
Well, we have a second by Commissioner Pennington, which is adverse to that, so.
I didn't say.
So we can, do you want to withdraw your second? Or we would need?
I don't. I, I'm comfortable with it going in at the higher with, with verbiage because I'd like to know what the state feels.
But that's no longer the motion. That's not the motion right now.
We have a motion.
Now it is. No, that's not the motion. He, oh, you withdrew.
The motion is, is.
I said, send it as is, and then we'll modi, let the state.
No, no.
Let the state come back, I mean, let our staff come back to this.
Hold on, we have a standing motion. So first Greg made the motion to transmit it, right?
Right.
And then you amended it to transmit it with the additional language.
East and west.
And that's what's on the floor right now.
But it was the wrong date. It was 2050, not 2035. Greg's motion said 2035.
No, no, it's changing. That's, it just refers to the old, the old, it says to update the 2010-2035, updating that one.
Just clarifying it because I heard 2035.
So it, well, it says 2035, Pam.
I know.
Okay. So.
You're withdrawing your motion.
We can call the question and see where it goes. I mean.
So the, on the floor here, we have with make the change and send it.
Yes, make the change and send it.
Okay.
And my reasoning behind seconding it is that it goes to the state, it's at the higher burden, I guess if you want to call it that. And we can get the feedback early on from them, whether or not they consider it burdensome because we could always pull it back in the second reading, just as you could add it. But at least we'd have the feedback early on from them.
It's more burdensome.
It is that. But, you know, if not when, it's that conversation about the scenic corridor in general. So, you know, I think it's like, it's just my opinion, it's one of those areas that we, you know, we've always ruled that way to begin with on intensity up there, and, and this would be a protection especially against the sewers coming in.
All right, so we have.
Before you ask, may I have a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Ms. Simone, and I know, we're going back a while. Mr. Clark, Dennis Clark, sent a couple of requests via email. And did we, was this in any of Mr. Clark's talking or ask? This was part of his ask as well?
This specific policy, yes, it's gone through two or three edits by staff since it was first presented to the board.
And Mr. Clark, did Mr. Clark specifically address CME 1.8.3?
I believe he did. I can't remember exactly.
He did, he did, because that was my point during, while we were doing this, is we had to clear that up.
And did we? In your opinion, did we get it right?
At the time, we did, until I just saw this analysis. Yeah.
We've been trying to modify the policy to address concerns of the residents while also maintaining the original intent of the policy, but if it's.
Is this going too far, Simone?
I believe at our, at our, our last workshop, we discussed that a lot of these concerns could be addressed at the Land Development Code scale. But if it is the direction of the board, we can try to do one more revision and really nail down that language.
Okay. All right, so the motion, Greg's motion, does include the language for inclusion of contiguous on the west side as well. So we'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
And my opposition is only because I'd rather do it the other way. Okay.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you again for, and Simone, you've done an awesome job. Thank you.
Chair, I'm sorry. Commissioner Richardson did not vote on that motion.
I said, I will say yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for noticing it.
Wow.
Yes, ma'am.
Good catch.
I was waiting till.
We're, we're keeping an eye on you guys now.
If that happened, I sat back too far. How dare I?
All right. That does it for our action items. We're going to move to county administrator report.
Thank you. Just wanted to let you know that the LHAP, or Local Housing Assistance Plan, was tentatively approved by the state. Staff will be presenting it tomorrow morning at 9:00 to the city of Palm Coast. This is scheduled to come before you on August 4th for consideration and final approval or adoption. Last week, on Friday, we received our third request from Florida Doge, looking for some additional information. Staff is currently compiling the data that they requested, and we should have that sent to them by its due date, which is a week from today, which is July 21st. We're proud to share that Amy Lou Kosik has earned the prestigious Certified Destination Management Executive Designation from Destinations International, recognizing her as a leader in tourism, management, and strategy. Additionally, she was recently appointed to the Board of Directors for the Florida Society for Ethical Eco-Tourism, which further demonstrates her commitment to responsible, sustainable travel within our state. So just wanted to say congratulations to Amy. And then as a reminder, I'm going to be leaving for vacation on Wednesday, July 16th. I'll return to work on Thursday, July 31st. During this time, Deputy County Administrator Salinas will be in charge. I'll be sending out a memo to let staff know as well as the clerk. But if anybody needs to reach me, I am available by phone. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the administrator? County attorney report, Mr. Moylan.
Thank you. First, I want to clean up an item, the value adjustment board. Chair Dance reminded me that our policy now is to read into the record the votes of the commissioners. So thank you, Chair. Chair Dance voted for Scott Chapius. Chair Dance voted for Scott Chapias. And then all four other county commissioners voted for Richard Gollner. Also, for the, I know you commissioners know, but for the benefit of the public, I did want to announce that the owners of the Old Dixie Highway Hotel did finally pay us our attorney's fees as ordered by the court, $76,000. They have demolished the structure. The last thing is to remove the debris, which is going slowly. However, demo permits do last for six months. So at this point in time, there's not a violation. We trust that they will complete that. And I do want to thank Dennis Baer. He's now representing them and he's been a lot easier to work with than their prior attorney. Also wanted to let the board know that the airport zoning inter locals are moving forward. We will bring it, bring both of them to you at the next meeting, the first meeting in August. Tonight, Benel approved the inter local upstairs here and Palm Coast has it tentatively scheduled for August 5th on their agenda. And lastly, I did want to tell the board that the city of Benel, under Alvin's leadership, Mr. Jackson's leadership, has engaged the county in conversations over the Hall Creek Preserve. He brought his entire team here to meet with the county staff and the developer was there as well. They are still working on the project. They're, they're not suing the city after they were denied their application for development. They're going back to the drawing board to try to take care of the concerns of the city and its residents. And as part of that process, they're looking at our concerns. So one thing that they are doing in their stormwater design is they're planning for a 100-year storm as opposed to a 25-year storm. So it's a, it's a stricter standard than what the Water Management District would otherwise require. And that is a good thing because this is at the headwaters of Hall Creek and it is a very low-lying area. There is 60% open space, which is a lot. And, and that's probably because it is so wet. So they're, they're working with the reality of the land that they have. We let them know that we need funds for a fire station and not just land. And we had to bear the bad, the bad news of how expensive fire stations are. As you know, we're building some right now. And where we left it, they were, the developer was going to engage Chief Tucker in a conversation about what that might look like, but we made sure they realized it needs to be a substantial sum of money. If you're going to build a new, essentially a new city, you ought to have a fire station. The last thing on that development that we were concerned about is the, the traffic. They are going to make an improvement to the county road that goes right through the middle of the development. I think it's called Black Point. I could, I may be wrong about the name of the road, but they're going to pave it. They're going to improve the drainage. Some of the development will have access on State Road 11, but most of it is going to be on State Road 100. FDOT has essentially told the city, we will require certain improvements as the subdivisions are phased in. So it's not, there's not a lot of specifics there, but they did have some concepts of where, where the access points would be. And they do plan on making improvements to the intersection of State Road 100 and US-1. So that's the overpass in Benel and the way it kind of curves around, it's a little bit awkward, but they have, they have a right of way there to work with and they will be making improvements there as required by FDOT. So we do appreciate them meeting with us and those were the highlights. And that is it for my report.
Pretty good. Any floodplain protections in there?
Just, just the, no, just, just the 100-year, you know, planning for a 100-year storm is a good thing and they're avoiding the wetlands because essentially they have to. There's just too much to mitigate.
Right. Okay, well, congra, I mean, thanks to Mr. Jackson for initiating that. And I would say congrats to the commission for holding tight and firm in their stance on, on pushing for this coordinated effort amongst the different governmental agencies on development, so. And thank you for your leadership in that regard as well. Anything else? Any questions for Mr. Moylan? Okay. We'll go to our final community outreach as, as the final 30-minute time period for public comment. If anybody wishes to address the commission for the last time this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll bring you back to the board and we'll close out with commissioner reports. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you all for coming. It's been a lovely day here and I appreciate all the staff in the back of the room that hang in there through all these long meetings and being patient and kind and available. It means a lot to have your back up when we need it the most, so thank you for that. I appreciate all of you. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Carney.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank everyone for the wonderful 4th of July. I think Mr. Seeger's still here. Great job. I did not stay for the fireworks, but I did watch them on Facebook. So they had live coverage. Boy, it would be nice to have that Flagler Beach Pier open for next year on the 250th, but that is absolutely not going to happen. So we can plan another year out at the airport. It was just a really great time. I think the day, my day was really slow other than what I did participating in the government, but it was a well, it was a, it was a good time. There's a lot of spirit. There was a lot of, it was a good, it was a good celebration. I think I, I did say it during the workshop, but myself and several staff, including Mr. Moylan and Mr. Jorge and some folks from engineering are going to meet with Flagler Beach. I did ask the city manager if he could meet with the commissioners one-on-one so that we could speed things up a little bit with regard to how Flagler Beach can get on board with the beach management funding plan. And they are interested in learning more about the MSBU. I think it starts with education. We learned that ourselves by the process that we went through, how we have been going through. And hopefully we can get things on a momentum where we're not dropping the ball on any of the state funding or the Army Corps project. So I look forward to doing that and I, I don't know what the follow-up will be right now, of course, but I'm sure there'll be some discussion at that joint meeting in August. But I'm, I'm grateful for Mr. Martin for allowing us to come and, and talk one on, you know, at their open meeting. So that's all I've got going on.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson.
No, I really don't have anything. I enjoyed the 4th. It was a lot of fun. Just want to compliment our staff for all they do and we're starting to make a little progress here on the, on the commission itself. We still have a long ways to go.
Commissioner Pennington.
Yes, thanks to Holly and Vicki for July 4th. Vicki, what a hoot, both of you were and quite enjoyed it.
We were the best in the parade, I have to say that. We really were.
We might have had the best song selection.
We were, yeah.
And then just as a follow-up, I would like to get maybe next time an update on the Brick Road, just where we're at and then, you know, I know we were going to file a map and we started having discussions with ILA, with Palm Coast, but I just want, you know, leave that for next time, but put it out there. That's it.
All right, housekeeping. If everybody could look at their, if you don't have it, it's not a big deal, but our BOCC meeting and agenda deadline has all of our meeting dates on it. What's missing and what I'd like to get feedback on is if we want to add to this or have a separate workshop one so that we have, for planning purposes, everybody can take into account their, their future scheduling, that workshops are, have been identified. So on an evening meeting, we can have an afternoon workshop and in a morning meeting, we can have a meeting following at 1:00. And we'll publish, we'll publish it so that you can plan on your day timers or your calendar apps that those are occupied and you can schedule around them. If we don't, and it gives staff an opportunity to forecast and plan workshop agenda items. If we don't have a working agenda for that, we'll just not publicize it, we'll pull it off. But this way, hopefully it can help us with scheduling workshops and, and everybody's busy calendars and outside. So if it's okay, we'll have staff draft up that.
I appreciated seeing that too because I could look at my schedule. I think it was, it was good for me and that's, I can challenge it next, next year.
Okay.
It's either that or go to every Monday, right? Like do a workshop on one Monday and then have a meeting the next Monday? It becomes long days, but.
I like them on one day.
I know. That's what I'm saying. The only, the only other option we have is to split it up and that's not going to be productive either. So, yeah, let's do it the way we've been doing it and, yeah.
All right, thank you. Let's see, I won't, I was going to say harp again on, on Senate Bill 180, just to let everybody know, I had a meeting with Representative Greco this morning mainly to complain about Senate Bill 180 and if there's going to be potential fixes that, and gave him some examples of how, you know, the blanket effect of the state, how it affects us and, you know, the fact that the work, the year and a half work we put into the tree protection ordinance becomes null and void. And it's really only supposed to take into account, let's say, storm-damaged properties that are redeveloping. And I have no problem even excluding those if, if a home in Flagler Beach was, was damaged and had to be completely rebuilt. Just want to thank Commissioner Harvey from Putnam and Commissioner Whitehurst from St. John's County for recognizing that and pulling together whatever votes they could to get me on even though I had, wasn't there. So I, I think that's just a, right, acknowledgement of one of the benefits of FAC is the, is the ability to network with other commissioners throughout the state. I've built a great relationship with my St. John's County and Putnam County commissioners and, and, you know, we have gone, Commissioner Whitehurst and I went through leadership together, so we, we, we get to know what kind of people, you know, we are, so. It's, it's a, it's a good benefit. I look forward to the time that, that I'll have to spend with FAC, but it's, it's all good. Really just thank Mr. Brower, thank your staff for the work on the finances. Everybody's, I see Hameed, I see a lot of emails going back to Hameed and late-night emails from Adam. So thank you guys for the hard work that you're doing at all hours of the day to meet deadlines and keep us on track, so thank you very much. And that goes to administration and legal as well. Thank you very much for putting in that hard work.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You forget to announce that you took my place on the board of the Small County Coalition.
I did, I did do that, yes.
Yes.
At the, at Mr. Doolin's urgency and, but all good, yes. That was, that was also, wasn't, didn't have to be there in person for that one.
No, it was a, it was a, nobody else raised their hand.
Yeah, so I'm, that's good. That's all good. Yes.
On our one-on-ones with our lobbyists that's coming up, is there, is that just an open session for us to talk one-on-one? Is there some specific goal in mind?
That's in August, right? That one is coming up?
I think it's in August, yeah.
We should have time.
Is it August or July?
We've got a little time.
Oh, we do.
We've got a little bit of time, yeah.
I'm sorry. All right, I'm thinking something else.
I think we'll get, we'll get some good guidance on that.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Having been through that from the other side, it's a really good opportunity so you get comfortable talking with them. And you get, and you get a phone number so you can call.
Well, when I, right after I came on the board, my first call was to the lobbyists and they, we all went on a video chat and we had it like, it was just 30 minutes, but we all, I get to meet them and, you know, talk about a little bit, but this was, this was nice that they're coming to us, so.
All right, that's all I have.
We adjourn.
We adjourn. Thank you, everybody.